You cannot be in subsidized housing to receive future assistance. There's habitability requirements, there's fair market rent requirements, and so really the way we look at it is one more piece of our rental assistance puzzle, so to speak. So we have a spectrum of services to meet varying needs in the community.
How many people does this serve?
With the program that we're just about to close up for fiscal year 23, for rental assistance, we've served probably close to 40, 30 to 40.
And what kind, I guess the last one is like you're asking for funds, what kind of money would you suspect that will be?
So we are asking for $389,487.88. This is a little more than we've requested in the past, and as I'll discuss a little bit more in detail later, we're also requesting a category called HMIS administration. It's a huge, it's a huge statewide database that we have to participate in, and this would help with personnel costs. Traditionally, we've received about 50% of what we ask for just because of the demand, so we just continue asking for that large amount. Although fiscal year 23 was really unique because we've done such a good job administering the program, DCD came to us in April and asked if we'd like an additional $125,000. They had a contract come back, and we're in the process of spending that down now. So, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Good questions. Any other, okay. Then I would take a motion to adopt Resolution 9.
I will second that.
Motion to adopt Resolution 9 of 2025.
I will second.
Great.
I'm so used to having you make the motion.
Yes.
All right, I'm on track.
All righty. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, so that motion has passed. Thank you, Faith. Next up, we have Quentin here from our Department of Aging with an item regarding our meals program.
Yep. I'm requesting approval for a contract for Fries Commissary for our Aging Meals Program. They will provide congregate meals, which is our meals at the senior center, in-home meals, and shelf-stable meals for two older persons in Center County. The contract will run from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2028.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners?
More of a comment. Just want to thank Quentin and his staff for their very hard work on this and having us, having more than one company bid on the contract, and Fries has a lot more options available than the other bid, and as I remember, it was also a little bit less money, so looks like a good contract.
Yeah, I was impressed to see that they have both regular and light meals at the congregate setting and also with the delivery meals that they can, residents can choose from, you know, meals that meet different dietary needs. So that was, I think, a helpful feature of this contract.
I'd like to thank you. We had a very comprehensive briefing in regard to this, and thank you for putting that together so we could better understand this. I think it's a pretty important program, and it's one that not only represents a lot of money, but it also represents, you know, the care and, you know, taking care of folks here in the community that desperately need it and deserve it.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you've done.
Agreed. Okay, with that, I would take a motion to approve the contract with Fries Commissary.
Motion to approve the contract with Fries Commissary, Inc.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Quentin.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jonathan here from Facilities, and we will be looking at an item regarding the Center County Sheriff's Office renovations.
Yes, good morning. This morning, I'm asking for your permission to enter into contract discussions for the Center County Sheriff's Office renovations project. We received four bids for the general construction, four for electrical construction, and two for mechanical construction by the deadline. All bids meet the 10% bid bond and the addendum acknowledgement.
Great. Okay, any questions on this item?
No.
Okay, then I would take a motion to enter into contract discussions for the Center County Sheriff's Office renovations invitation for bid.
I will second that.
I will make the motion to enter into contract discussions for the Center County Sheriff's Office renovations information for bid.
Second.
Invitation to bid, sorry.
That has been moved and seconded. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 All right, so that item has passed. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Norm here with Emergency Communications. We have a couple of items here.
Good morning. At your request this morning, both are supplemental equipment needed for our UPS replacement project, and both wide redundancy. First, consider co-star purchase of nine UPS units from CDWG for our 911 Center workstations as part of our UPS replacement projects. These will also power the workstations during the transition and also provide redundancy to the primary UPS. These, total cost for this project is $11,475 with the funding coming from previous year's unspent grant. The second request is again a co-star purchase for three APC rack-mounted automatic transfer switches from CDWG for equipment without dual power supply capabilities. This will add redundancy to those racks that are in our equipment room and automatically switch the source of power if the primary UPS suffers any issues. These will add dual redundancy to the remaining single power source equipment, including the SAC Regional 911 equipment. The total cost is $4,134 with funding coming from previous years' unspent grant funds.
Okay, thank you. So these are, both of these items really ensure that we don't have outages that are, we have backup.
They add secondary redundancy to the primary UPS.
Great.
But for those who don't speak maybe all the technology, UPS is...
Uninterruptible power supply.
It's a battery backup.
That provides the immediate backup for any power failures until the generator kicks out.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Higgins, any questions?
I think you guys covered it. Thanks, Norman, and staff for making those systems more robust.
Okay, then I would take a motion to approve emergency communication items one and two.
I will second.
Motion to approve the two items for emergency communications.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, that item has passed. Thank you so much, Norm.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Krista here with Risk Management for a memorandum of understanding for some wellness services.
Yes, good morning. So historically, Prime Care Medical works with our Center County Correctional Facility. They provide our medical services there, and we like using their services also for non-jail employees, and so they have been kind enough to agree to provide flu shots to us for a set fee, but also do our blood pressure clinics every month. So we've decided to make that official and put it in writing, and that's what we would like your permission to approve, the memorandum of understanding, and it's for a two-year period from June 11th, 2025 to June 11th, 2027.
Okay, so there would be flu shot clinics here in the Willabang building or other county facilities?
We do that each fall. We have employees register for them, and then their nurses come on site to offer those vaccines. And then each month, the third Tuesday of, every month, their nurse will come on site to three buildings to provide free blood pressure measurements.
Great, thank you. Yeah, other questions?
Well, other than, you brought a very special guest.
Yes.
And new, new employee with you today.
Absolutely.
If you would take a moment to maybe introduce her, she's a public-facing star of our organization now.
I'd be more than happy to. So I'd like to introduce you all to Don Nuryoder. She's our new Willabang front desk receptionist, and she started yesterday, so she already knows all the departments already, so she's...
And you haven't scared her off after two days.
I hope you know.
Oh, man. Well, good stuff. Welcome, Don. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Any questions? Okay, then we can take a motion.
Motion to add the MOU with Prime Care Medical, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that item has passed. Thank you, Krista.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Faith again for the next item related to the ESG grant.
All right. So this is the official request for the Board of Commissioners to review and approve our grant submission for fiscal year 25. This is the same-day approval so that we can stay in the timeline for when the grant is due. I know I talked a little bit about it at the resolution, but just a couple highlights, which makes this a little bit different. This will be the third grant that we've applied for for this particular program, so now that we have a couple of years under our belt, we feel a little bit more confident about what we're asking for and how to budget it into the department. So of the total that we are requesting, $198,500 would be for homeless prevention, which again is like the financial rental assistance, and we also have dollars set aside for caseworker personnel. Emergency shelter would be $156,910, which is for operations and essential services like personnel as well. $20,000 for HMIS, which is the homelessness management information system. Again, it's a statewide system we're required to use and participate in, which is, can be very laborious, so we'd be putting that, those dollars towards adult services staff. And then we would have admin at $14,077.88. So that's what makes up the total of just a little under $390,000. And again, the biggest change with adding that HMIS is with this particular grant, when you apply, you have to apply based on certain categories, and then you can move money within with different budget modifications. So this just gives us in our department more opportunity to put dollars into personnel for the work that they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this item? Okay, then we can take a motion.
Motion to approve the grant submission for the fiscal year 25 Emergency Solutions Grant through DCED.
I will second that.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded to approve the grant submission for the fiscal year 25 Emergency Solutions Grant through DCED. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Faith.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Dave with Transportation with an interesting item here regarding a memorandum of understanding with Bellefonte Borough and Center County Transportation, so...
Can we have a guest from Bellefonte Borough? I do. Pleased to have one of the council members from Bellefonte Borough here with us. But I common ask the board to consider approving a memorandum of understanding with the Bellefonte Borough Council and the Center County Office of Transportation regarding transportation services. Little history on what, how this will actually work with the borough. They would be funding trips, assisting in funding trips for individuals that are under 60 years of age that have no funding sources, in particular people that need to get to work without, that don't have a vehicle or transportation. This would be done throughout our shared ride service, the same as everybody else we transport, and the borough would pay the same rates as anyone else that rides our service. Clients would be required to pay a small copay of $5 each way. Serving Bellefonte Borough is nothing new. We've been doing that for as long as transportation has been in business. It's just we're taking a different role with the borough and the fact that they're asking to contract and help fund these trips due to the loss of their previous service. So it's, nothing has really changed, just a little, little different process in the billing and what we do. So they agree to pay 100% less the copays for this, effective today, hopefully. And when it says the PENDOT rates, all of our, all of our rates are set through PENDOT and the shared ride services, approved by the commissioners, of course, before we adopt them. And then when needed, we do sometimes have to raise them, which we did this year, but maybe next year we won't have to, hopefully, you know, if we get enough work that, and enough transportation that we don't need to, we don't. But I think it'll be a good benefit to the residents of Bellefonte that need this service. I think it's great that the borough is willing to provide this for the individuals, and we're looking forward to it. My staff's already geared up to take on this responsibility, so...
That's great. Yeah, glad we're able to provide this and that Bellefonte Borough is, you know, interested in providing this service to their constituents.
Is there a cap on the amount of money that the borough is...
Well, they currently have, I'm guessing around $16,000, Debbie, that is earmarked for the last half of this year. And based on all of our number crunching and data that we've received, that should cover us through the end of the year. And then the full amount that they would had put forth to transportation moving forward would, would take effect in January, continuing onward. And the borough has agreed that if we get to a point prior to the end of the year that we might be running low on funds, they would reconsider, you know, some emergency funding to help bridge the gap. But I, we don't know what we don't know. Hopefully, we'll be able to stay within the means of what they have, but time will tell. It's more or less a day-by-day basis, yes.
Okay.
Is there any...
Anything you'd like to add, or...
Come on up, Deb.
I'd like to mention a couple of things. Want to thank Dave and his staff and the borough of Bellefonte for many months of hard work to put this agreement together. And obviously, for residents of the borough of Bellefonte, I believe going up to about 50 miles in any direction, I think that pretty much covers the entirety of Center County. So that'll be more flexible. But do want to remind citizens that just because your postal code says Bellefonte doesn't mean you live in the borough of Bellefonte. This does not cover residents of Benner Township, Spring Township, Walker Township, and a variety of other townships where your postal address says Bellefonte.
Right.
Good morning, Debbie Cleaton. I am on Bellefonte Borough Council. I'm co-chair of the task force and a lifelong transit user, and thank you very much for considering this project, and I think it's going to be completely beneficial to our residents. Bellefonte Borough's been committed to providing transportation to its residents for many decades. We've always budgeted for it, and we, as long as I'm on council, we will continue to do that. We do not know what the ridership will be between now and the end of the year. It's a new system. We'll find out, but I don't think it's going to go over budget at all. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for working with us.
Yep, seems like a great partnership, so...
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Okay, then we can take a motion to approve the MOU with Bellefonte Borough Council.
I think Gary might have it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you need to do a turnover first?
Okay, go ahead and do the motion, and then I'll take questions.
All right. Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Bellefonte Borough Council.
I will second that.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, that item has passed. Gary, go ahead.
I guess you have people already signed up or interested that you know about, she mentioned it. Do you have an indication what ridership will be in terms of this?
Well, based on all the data, we're thinking, you know, a few dozen people maybe initially, and just as it progresses, it could increase, but all the, all the data that was given and the trips taken and the purpose of the trips gears us up to believe that we shouldn't be more than that. You know, we've already had previously served almost 700 residents of Bellefonte with our service prior to all this happening, so a lot of the people that was on the list already had our services for other reasons, yes.
Does this point you see a need to add staff or more...
Well, right now, our staffing is right about where we need it to be. We're going to try to add a couple more, what we call on-call positions, to help with vacations and stuff like that and bridge the gap when people are out. And of course, not only with the Bellefonte Borough, maybe a little bit of an increase, but the meal program is going to increase us a little bit in need. So going forward, I'll probably be back here asking for a little more staff availability for such services, yes.
I have a song to agenda. Is there a length of term for this contract, is it a year or...
The contract with Bellefonte is until terminated by either party at this point, based on funds, of course, but hopefully continuous indefinitely is what we're all hoping for, that it continues to be a worthwhile project for everyone, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Any other press questions?
For those who would look to sign up for like this type of service, it would be the same for signing up for any other Center County transportation trip.
Yep, our service is pretty simple to sign up. You can go on pen dot, findmyridepa.gov and do it online. I recommend they call our office at 814-355-6807, and my reservationists and staff people can walk them through the process, sign them up, explain all the benefits, you know, that way there's no questions that are left unanswered, yes.
That's right. Okay, all right, then if there's no other questions, I guess we'll move on, but thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for the support.
Think this will be really helpful.
Thank you.
All right, we have Quentin up again to talk about a grant agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for, with the Bellefonte Senior Center, so...
So we're, we're requesting consideration to have a grant agreement approved for, from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for our senior center community grant funds. Essentially, with our senior centers, we have the opportunity to have a non-competitive grant, which is if we don't apply for, for any specific item, or we can go with a competitive grant. And for the Bellefonte Center, we decided to go for it, and we are, we were looking to replace furniture at the Bellefonte Senior Center. The furniture there is worn, and some of it's unsafe and a fall risk. So the plan was to replace that furniture, and we did get it approved. And the grant runs from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, for the amount of $46,408.
Great, thank you. That seems really like a positive development going into the, the new Bellefonte Senior Center location at our community services building. So as we're moving into this new location, which is going to be really a nice asset for the local community, we'll have new furniture as well. So it's all going to be kind of shiny and new and, and hopefully really a welcoming space for everyone, so...
And please, please know that we will be providing an opportunity for the borough, the Bellefonte Borough Council to tour the facility here in the near future, and we look forward to getting your input and feedback as to what you think, so...
Yep.
Thank you.
That's right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, then we can take a motion.
Motion to approve the grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Okay, that item has passed, so thank you so much. And Quentin, thank you for your initiative on going for this grant, so much appreciated. So the next item, also with aging, is a contract with, addendum with Mid-Penn Legal Services. If you could just give us a little overview of this.
Sure. We're asking to extend our contract with Mid-Penn Legal Services for an additional year at the same rate as, as the previous year. And basically, what Mid-Penn does for us is that we have older adults who need assistance, need a consultation with legal. They could be having a tenant issue with possibly getting evicted, and they need representation for that. They could be somebody who's applying for benefits and they need, maybe they're going for an appeal, and it just gives somebody, for them to get direction from somebody legally. They don't do criminal or civil situations, but we use the service regularly for people who, who just need some guidance.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this item? Okay, then we could take a motion.
Motion to add the contract addendum with Mid-Penn Legal Services to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
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 All right, that item has passed, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy here from M H I D E I D N A. So we have a couple of items here.
Good morning. We have two separate agenda items for the board today. The first is a contract addendum with Treatment Implementation Collaborative. TIC conducted a regional dialectical behavioral therapy training for us earlier this month. This was an amazing training. We had over 50 clinicians from Center County and the surrounding counties participate. It was incredibly well-received, and we are hopeful to, we've applied and are hopeful to receive some additional training dollars for next year so that we can do a Part Two training for clinicians next year. The original agreement with TIC included the cost for the training itself and travel for the trainers to come in and do this training. We are requesting additional training dollars in the contract addendum to cover the materials, the booklets for the DBT training, as well as the motivational interviewing training that we have coming up in July. Helen Best, who is one of the facilitators for the DBT training, offered to purchase these materials for us directly from the publisher because she gets a 30% discount from the publisher that we could not get.
Okay.
The publisher only offered us a 10% discount, and Helen was able to facilitate a 30% discount for us, and she was kind enough to do that and save us that additional money in the training budget. So the contract addendum increases their agreement from $36,000 to $48,894.89. This is all federal money that we've already received and comes out of this training grant that we received from OMSOS. And it covers the time period, April 15th, 2025 through August 31st, 2025, and we would ask for same-day approval so that we can pay Helen for the expenses she's already incurred.
Okay. All right, so the, the addendum is not, the addendum just brings us to $48,000, it's not a...
Exactly. It's just for that additional money for the materials that she purchased.
Got it. Okay, other questions from the commissioners? Okay, then I would take a motion.
Motion to approve the contract addendum with Treatment Implementation Collaborative.
I will second that.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye. Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that item has passed. And Kathy, I'll let you move on to the next item.
The second item is a letter of agreement with Strawberry Fields Incorporated. This is a contract renewal for their early intervention services that they provide for us. This includes occupational therapy, physical therapy, special instruction, speech pathology, and IFSP teaming, which is a service that allows two therapists to be onsite at the same time. The contract total is $390,000. The majority of that is state funding. The county match portion is $39,000, and it is for the time period July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
Okay, thank you. They're a really crucial partner for the county in providing these services.
Exactly.
Questions from the Commissioners?
None here.
Then I will take a motion.
Motion to add the letter of agreement with Strawberry Fields, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that item has passed. Thank you so much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Is Julia out there? Okay, Leah is here to present on children and youth services.
Good morning. I am here this morning to ask for your consideration for the approval of two new contracts and then a renewal of those same contracts as we're starting a new fiscal year. So the first contract that I have for you this morning is with Youth Essential Services LLC, referred to as YES, to provide foster care services for dependent and delinquent youth. That contract total is for $10,000, with the state share being $8,000, and the county share of $2,000. That particular contract is for a period of May 23 of 2025 to June 30 of 2025. The second item is the renewal of that same contract. This time, the contract total is for $30,000, with the state share being at $24,000 and the county share at $6,000 for a period of July 1, 2025, to June 30 of 2026. YES is a program that is new to us in terms of, we have not placed children in that program before. However, it's been used by other counties for their complex needs, children. So this is a program that is a specialized setting. They maintain a two-to-one staffing ratio and provide onsite therapy. We're utilizing it to help some of our kids that have been in a residential treatment facility step down to a lesser restrictive program and then hopefully be able to transition into a foster home.
Right.
And so this particular program is located in Limerick, Pennsylvania. So again, a new area for us, but a program that is so far being very successful. The second contract that I have is for Taylor Diversion Program, again, providing foster care services for dependent and delinquent youth. That contract total is again $10,000, with the state share being at $8,000, and the county share at $2,000 for a period of May 28, 2025, to June 30 of 2025. And then a renewal for the same contract, for a contract total of $30,000, with the state share being at $24,000 and the county share at $6,000 for a period of July 1, 2025, to June 30 of 2026. Taylor is also another program that is specialized setting for kids with complex case needs and maintains those similar ratios and provides those onsite services for complex kids.
All right, thank you for, those are good explanations. Any questions from the Commissioners?
No.
Okay. All right, then, I would take a motion to add the children and youth services items 1 through 4 to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the four children and youth services items to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that item has passed. So thank you so much, Leah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
Okay, so we have a good-sized consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this week's consent agenda?
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That item has passed. Moving on then to authorities, boards, and commissions, we have one proposed appointment for Drug and Alcohol Planning Council. If we would have a motion then to approve this ABC appointment.
Motion to approve the ABC appointment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ABC appointment. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that item has passed. Then moving on to the check run, the check that I'd like to highlight today in the check run is to Habitat for Humanity. They're one of our key partners in homelessness prevention through our adult services department. And with that, I would look for a motion to approve the check run dated June 27.
Motion to approve the check run dated June 27.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that item has passed. John, is there an administrator's report today?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Then moving on to voter registration report, I do have a voter registration report today. So the total number of voters registered in Center County as of today is 101,709. That's up 48 from last week's report. Of those, 41,286 are registered Democratic, 160 Green Party, 558 Libertarian, 15,594 with no affiliation, 42,097 Republican-registered voters, and all of the other minor parties come up to 2014, bringing us to that total of 101,709 registered voters. Our precinct of the week that we're going to recognize today is Precinct 7, Howard Borough. There are 429 registered voters in Precinct 7. At the last election in May, they had a voter turnout of 27.5%. They vote at the Howard Fire Company at 341 Walnut Street in Howard, and we'd like to thank the fire company for the use of their facility for our elections. And that is the voter report. In terms of announcements, Center County government offices are going to be closed on Friday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. And executive sessions, John, do we have executive sessions to report or hold?
None to report. However, there is a need to hold an executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, so when we wrap up this meeting, we'll adjourn to executive session.
Please.
Okay. Moving on then to the rest of our public meeting schedule. Next week, on July 8, we have Board of Commissioners at 10:00, and then Thursday, July 10, we have Board of Commissioners and salary board at 10:00 a.m. And that kind of wraps up this meeting. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'll go to questions from the press.
Any concerns in terms of no state budget, or is the county budget situation good enough that you have surplus or whatever to hire, I mean, to continue on?
Yeah, so I think Center County is well-positioned to be able to withstand some delay in the state budget. There are certainly other counties throughout the Commonwealth that are not so well-positioned to be able to withstand much delay. So, you know, we're hopeful that they wrap this up in the near future.
Is there any added concern this year with the uncertainty with federal funding programs?
Well, I'm sure that may have something to do with why the state budget has been more challenging this year. So, yeah. John, do you have anything to add on that?
Nothing other than, you know, obviously, we're being very prudent with our budgeting through this part of the year and getting into October. So we're hoping to have a better idea of the overall fiscal picture by October.
John, what's the schedule, the tenant's schedule moving into the new building, community services building, or is there...
Okay, so there are multiple permits that have transpired over the course of the project. So the primary permit for the project, we're trying to wrap up right now. We're in the midst of final inspections for that part of the building, and we're hoping to start moving folks in towards the end of this month or into early August. There are a couple other permits, though. As we work through the project, we added a permit for tenant fit-out, as well as for some additional parking. We went through a land development process for that to add additional parking. So there will be other construction activity that is occurring on that site throughout, through the end of this year.
I got one question.
Yes.
So as you all may know, Senate is going to be voting on the big, beautiful bill here shortly. Is there any thoughts to how that might fall, impacts, excuse me, how those impacts may fall on Center County on a local level, or is that kind of in the air right now, not sure?
So I'd say one thing that we would be watching pretty closely is Medicaid, because, you know, in Center County, Medicaid helps fund certain functions that county government provides. It's also, you know, something that we've been working on as a Board of Commissioners for the last, in recent months, has been working with Center Care's nursing home to ensure their long-term financial stability. So, you know, I think we really want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping track of what those, you know, potential changes with Medicare funding and how that could affect our local population, and certainly those who need long-term nursing care among them. And of course, you know, SNAP and, you know, those kind of food benefits are really important to many people in our community. So, you know, I think because of the, you know, the populations we serve and county government often have, you know, some significant needs, we, you know, will be really watching that carefully to understand what the implications are locally. Anything from other Commissioners on that?
I just wanted to add that thankfully, I believe Nittany Hospital is in a pretty strong financial position, but I have heard that in the state of Louisiana, hospital administrators there are talking about absolute devastation, especially with the additional, I think it's $313 billion of additional cuts to Medicaid that are being proposed.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, then I think I could take a motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session at 10:41.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to enter executive session. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.